Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Take a moment of silence, please. Thank you. Will meeting with public comment? Yes, Stacy.
On agenda item number thirteen, which is the approval of, apparently an attorney for the county for litigation, why are we hiring outside counsel?
Well, this is about the construction building and about elections.
It doesn't say elections.
Yeah, we need to add that in there. Sorry about that. Litigation involving the construction of public safety building and elections litigation at an hourly rate. Well, that's what we felt we needed to do. Anything else?
If you want to keep moving on, I guess I've only got three more to look at.
Vera?
On number ten on the agenda, I'd like to know more about the resignation of Jason Beardsley from Assistant Public Defender. He is resigning. So any reason for that? And do you have someone to replace him at this time?
We will run an ad for that. You know, we'll advertise that position. And as far as his resignation, that would be a personnel issue, which we cannot discuss, and I really don't know why he resigned.
Okay, and then I have other questions, a group of them. I'd like to know about the testing that was done in our county the past two Saturdays. How many people were tested and what the results were?
There were forty-eight tested at the Susquehanna site. They all came back negative. And there were ninety-three, I think it was, in Montrose.
Ninety-eight.
Are you sure? Because I talked to Mary and I thought it was ninety-three.
Well, yeah, we'll get back to that when I thought it was ninety-eight, but you may be right.
Okay, well, anyway, six of them come back positive. One person lived in Scranton, and then the other five were spread throughout the county.
Now, what happens if you're testing, you test positive? What happens? Anything to the person?
I think you quarantine for fourteen days.
They have to be quarantined for fourteen days?
Self-quarantine for fourteen days. You want to speak to that? You've been talking.
I know that there is contact tracing done. Wyoming County, from what I gather, their public health nurse is handling the contact tracing for Susquehanna County in Wyoming currently, as they're looking for a new public health nurse. So that is done, but they are expected, as Commissioner Arnold said, to self-quarantine for that amount of time, and a negative test is also expected.
So who was doing the tracing? What nurse? From what county?
In our county, the public health nurse was responsible for that.
That was her name?
We currently, right now, do not have a public health nurse.
So then if there's no public health nurse, she's not doing tracing. So who's doing the contact?
As I just said, Wyoming County is covering that.
Wyoming County, the health nurse?
Yes, and that's overseeing, Vera, by the Department of Health. They're the ones that coordinate, oversee, direct.
Do you know the person that's doing it there in Wyoming?
Not offhand, no.
I'd like to also, yes, so I'm concerned to, as far as masks go, that's still not a law?
It's recommended, and businesses can require it for people to come into their, into the facilities.
So the thing is, it can be optional. If it's not a law, that means it could be optional.
It could be required by certain organizations and businesses for you to come into there. But as far as, if it's not within that business, it's optional.
And then what happens if it's required? Who's going to enforce it?
I guess the store owner or business owner would enforce it by asking you to leave. There's not a task force out there, you know, telling people to put a mask on, as last I knew.
Actually, I think the governor's latest order is that businesses are required to require masking.
Well, essential workers are required, yes.
Essential workers?
Essential workers and businesses are required, restaurants.
So there's really no enforcement, like you said, there's no enforcement task force? So who knows how it's going to be enforced?
We don't, we're not involved in that conversation.
And then do you know if police are enforcing anything?
No, I don't know. We're not involved in that. We have no jurisdiction over that at a county level.
And I'm concerned about the roads. If you know anything about the roads, where I live in Silver Lake Township, it's still a mess. Route 4002, I've been calling, sending messages, leaving messages for a long time. My granddaughter came in to visit from out of state, and she went into a pothole, damaged the front of her car on that road. The potholes are so terrible. Citizens are putting out even their own, like, red, what do you call those things?
Cones?
Cones, the red cones. We're putting out our own cones to protect ourselves. And it's, we need some help there. If anybody knows anything about 4002, and I haven't gotten any calls back to say that they need to be there, and it's now the end of July almost. So they should be out there and have enough people to do it. You know, with all the money that's coming into the county, they should have enough. So any comments on that?
First of all, there isn't a lot of money coming into the county. You've got to remember that Penda's funded through the tax on the gasoline, which nobody's been traveling because they were all shut down for three months. So Penda has a huge shortage. But to answer that, my understanding, and I think Judy, you checked on 4002, and they tell you that they're supposed to be working on that this week or starting it this week?
I believe they've started this week.
Nothing this week. I've been traveling on it. It's like my area. I'm on the roads every day. Nothing yet on as far as 4002. They were maybe on Brackney Hill Road, but that's part of Brackney, but not on Laurel Lake Road or Quaker Lake Road.
It was our understanding, Vera, they were going to be starting that this week.
I hope so. I hope so, because we've been waiting for like about a year, and it's totally unacceptable.
And they may have started on the other end. I talked to somebody in that area that made a, made a comment yesterday that they did begin, so it might not be an area that you've seen as of yet. So hopefully, there's some good news coming with that.
And then what can you tell us about schools? Are they opening this year? And are there any requirements? Like, some parents are concerned about the requirements. What are the requirements?
Schools are not our responsibility. We don't have any comment on schools.
How about any of you, Judy, any comments on schools?
No, but I do know that the schools are, have their plan available right online, Vera, so you can go ahead and take a look at the details of those. They're all different, but they all have their plans right on their webpage.
So their plans could be different?
Yep, right on their webpage.
And I woke up this morning to a black bear in my yard. I haven't seen them for a few years. I haven't seen it for a few years, but I always feed the birds. So there's a bird, I keep bird seed in a can out there, and it's been years. And they, every now and then, they come through. So my dog went nuts this morning, you know, early this morning, and I didn't look out until 5:30 this morning, and he was sitting there with the two banks of bird seed that he was eating. And then I went out and I made noise, you know, with the stainless steel pot, banged the pots. And he took off, but he looked like kind of a young bear. He didn't look too big.
Thank you.
So we have bears, and also, you know, we have bats in Laurel Lake, which we haven't seen bats for a while, but my neighbor just called me yesterday. Forty bats flew out of the side of her house. So if you know anybody who's doing research on bats, because I knew there were researchers years ago, and they're concerned about the decline.
Right.
Right? And now, we at Laurel Lake, we got at least forty.
That's good.
Which is like amazing, and that was also a big surprise that I was happy about. So you don't know any researchers that we can contact?
No.
Not offhand, no.
And then also, can we have, besides here, the taping, can we go back to also YouTube for people who can't come in and are afraid to come in? Can't you do both? That's what they're doing in Bradford County. They're doing both, so people can also watch from their homes. Can you do that?
Unfortunately, it's too difficult for us, because when, what you don't realize is when we have it live and we're doing that, we have our IT crew in here with us, and it takes up a majority of the room. So to be able to do that in conjunction with having people come in, we don't have the space to be able to do that. So it has to be one or the other.
Can we move it to another room, then?
We don't have another room that's available.
Because the courtrooms are now open, Colin, it makes it difficult for us. So we've got to, if there is.
Can we just go back to the YouTube for a while, then? Because honestly, you know, I didn't come last week because I have, I was supposed to schedule some medical appointments, and being in a closed room, I mean, today's not bad. There's plenty of room. But as you can see, these chairs are not six feet apart even for eight people. So if they got back to the numbers that we had, and I know the last couple of meetings that were online, I believe you had eleven people that were watching, so not everybody's able to participate. And like I said, you know, some of us with compromised communities, having to go in and have testing and stuff. I don't want to have to keep going in and getting, you know, Corona tests and stuff. So if it's one or the other, I would rather see you just go back to, you know, the YouTube thing, because more people can be involved that way.
Okay, we'll think, we'll talk about that. Thank you, Colin.
I have another question, too. I don't know if she's done yet. I understand, I was looking through some records, and I see that it looked like there was two audits for the county that have not been done. It looks like maybe one has been a couple of years since it's been done. I believe that one was for the Records Department. Do you have any comments on these audits and how, I believe they're supposed to be done yearly, correct?
We have an auditor here. He's working on audits.
Where is he? What's your question? I'm sorry, may I ask?
Sure.
Sure. What's your question? For what department?
I understand that there's at least two audits. I think one had to do with the county courts. And the last I looked, it looked like that one had gotten up to date.
Go ahead. So there's only one now, right?
I think there was only one still, and I believe that was the Records Department, perfect courts or Records Department?
We have, we try to conduct the audit in a timely manner, right? And we're responsible for those records that are sent to us. Okay. The only open, is it our?
If you, I think, I think the gist of what you're saying is you're in, still in the process of going through that audit and once that's done.
We have two open audits, one we just concluded yesterday in its entirety, and we have one open audit, and we're waiting for the completion of some records from that office. So, you know, we're in pretty good shape.
Thank you. It's been several years, though.
Don't know.
Thank you.
Don't know. But we're in pretty good shape. You know, happy to answer that more directly, but we're in pretty good shape.
And what's your name?
Richard. Last name is Surachi, S U R A C I.
Thank you, Richard. Appreciate it. Colin, anything else?
Not right now. I have one from the last meeting. I forgot to bring that with me.
I just want to ask, too, about the miscellaneous compensation schedule on your agenda. I just have a request, like you have nine dollars a day for jurors to be paid, just nine dollars a day, and mileage only at seventeen cents a mile. I would like to request, can that be increased? Can that be increased and be more up to date? I mean, what are other counties like Bradford County doing or Wayne County that are similar to us in size, possibly? It sounds like such a minuscule amount. People are doing their civic duty. Can you go?
We'll have to look into that. It's under the judge. It falls under the judge.
Can you request the judge to look into it and increase it?
Maybe if they do their civic duty, they should volunteer.
Well, it's a major civic duty to do, and it should be nicely given some kind of money.
So then, it's a paid civic duty.
Yeah, right, a paid civic.
Not a voluntary, voluntary civic duty.
Well, and also mileage, look at the mileage, seventeen cents a mile. Meanwhile, we're paying two hun, two dollars and forty-five cents per gallon for gas.
Which is cheaper than what it was last year, about three bucks a gallon.
Well, anyway, that's my request, even though you may not agree with it, Alan. I think as a juror, I did try being a juror for a little bit. And I think it's nice to give more money, because they're losing, some people losing work time. Not everybody gets paid from their work, and it's not an easy thing to do. I would say at least thirty-five dollars a day. I gotta see what the others are paying.
All right, thank you.
Thank you, Vera.
I have one other question.
Thank you.
In light of this virus that has taken people out of school, etc., we also have another pandemic, which is Lyme disease, as you know. I'm wondering what you guys are doing as far as trying to help control ticks and things while the kids are out, the playgrounds, parks, and recreation areas, and that type of thing. Is there any kind of treatments being done? Is it just signs being put out, or are there even any signs put out, brochures, anything? You know, what's being done to help prevent these people that are now spending even more time trying to find the recreation areas and, you know, utilizing those?
Well, I know there's been signs out, and with information, you know that, has been handed out over the years. And there's been stuff on the internet. As far as spraying or anything like that, no, the county is not responsible for doing anything like that.
Well, you may not be responsible, but there's a lot of things the county is not responsible for. And I think that this, because it isn't pandemic, I don't understand why we have to put some money together and at least spray some of the parks that the kids are playing in.
Because they're not the county's parks. You need to talk to the communities that own those parks, and they're responsible to get those parks sprayed. We can't go spray people's parks.
That would be at the township level, you know, whatever park is in the township.
Right, but you're on the board of the Parks and Recreation, too, right?
No, there is no Parks and Recreation in this county.
All right, then tourism?
Yep, there is tourism.
We'd have to talk to townships.
But you're the head of the tourism.
That's a big responsibility. No, I'm not the head of it. That's a big responsibility for the townships to take on. We'd have to talk to them about that, or you would come.
The only signs that I actually saw, I was in only one park recently, and I just saw one at the very beginning of a, as you go in and you're brushed, as you're going into the view. So there's nothing along the trails or at the end of the trail to remind people to, you know, do their tick checks and wear repellent things. I'd just like to see more of that done, especially, you know, through the Tourism Bureau.
Okay, I agree with you. Okay, we'll look into that, do that. Anything else? Motion?
Motion to close public comment.
I'll second that motion.
I got a motion by Commissioner Hall to close public comment, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve item two.
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the minutes of the July eighth Commissioners Meeting, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve item three.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the following, which is paying the bills, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve item four.
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and accept the hiring of Stephanie Clark of Montrose to the open, union-eligible, full-time position of Second Deputy Recorder of Deeds, Register of Wills at twelve forty-five per hour, forty hours per week, effective July sixteenth, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the court-related bargaining unit contracting county policy, recommendation of Michelle Esterbrook. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve five.
I will second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the hiring of Matthew Oxy of Brackney to the open, part-time, union-eligible position of Corrections Officer at fourteen ninety-six per hour, varied hours, effective July sixteenth. Further recommendation of Warden Mark Shelp. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve item six.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and accept the hiring of Elizabeth Kelly, South Montrose, to the open, full-time, union-eligible position of Establishment Specialist Court Liaison at eleven forty-eight an hour, forty hours a week. Recommendation of President Judge Legg, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to approve item seven.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the hiring of Shane Kelder of New Milford to the open, full-time, union, non-union, I'm sorry, position of IT technician, fifteen twenty-three per hour, forty hours per week, effective July twenty-third, 2020, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the county policy. Recommendation is Stephen Janowski, IT Director. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve item eight.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the hiring of Jan Rosenkrantz, Montrose, to the open, non-union, full-time position of Deputy Chief Clerk at thirty-five thousand per year, effective July twenty-seventh, per the recommendation of Rebecca Hubbard, Chief Clerk. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to approve item nine.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the transfer of Kiana Leverie from the position of Deputy Director of Planning GIS to the open, non-union, full-time position of Director of Planning GIS at forty-eight thousand per year, effective July twenty-second, 2020, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to county policy. Recommendation of Rebecca Hubbard, Chief Clerk. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion approved, done.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to accept the resignation of Jason Beardsley, Esquire, from the position of Assistant Public Defender, effective July twenty-fourth. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve item eleven.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve the termination of Isaac Cook from the position of Full-Time Corrections Officer, effective July twenty-first, 2020, per the recommendation of Warden Mark Shelp. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve item twelve.
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the following Tax Claim Bureau exoneration request. Great Bend Township, in the name of Kenneth Ayers, assessment sent notification to the Tax Claim Bureau that the mobile home has been removed, has been moved. New Milford Township, parcel in the name of William Thompson, assessment sent notification to the Tax Claim Bureau that the mobile home has been razed. New Milford Township, in the name of Jack McKeeby, assessment sent notification, the mobile home has been razed. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve thirteen.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to ratify and approve retaining Robert Schwab of Rosenjinkinson Greenwald for the representation in litigation involving the construction of the public safety building and the elections litigation at an hourly rate of two hundred dollars an hour. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve item fourteen.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to prevent entering into a contract with Motorola Solutions, Inc. of Chicago, Illinois, for the purchase and warranty of K2 Core MCC 7500E dispatch consoles with CTI and remote console. Purchase price of five hundred ninety-eight thousand, paid through Act thirteen, and annual maintenance support and software for seven years for the following prices. Want me to read all that, everybody? No?
The categories under for Act thirteen, you've already had.
Public safety.
Public safety. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Oh, paid for at the bottom, I do want to say that. Paid through Pima grant funding. That will be the yearly, maintenance will be through Pima. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve item fifteen.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to advertise for public bid on Menisa bid for the twenty, or 2007 GMC Savannah G.
I'll second that.
Jump in the gun?
It's all right.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to approve sixteen.
I'll second that.
A motion by Commissioner Hall to review and award the bid on the 2014 Mobility Event Tour One for six thousand one hundred and one dollars to Martin Mitchell. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to approve seventeen.
I'll second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to close the meeting at nine twenty-three, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye. Say aye, Judy?
Yes, aye.
You did?
Yep.
All right, we are now closed, and now we have a salary board meeting. Good morning, Rebecca. Call the salary board meeting at nine, oops, I'm sorry, Brian, you agenda, don't you? Morning, Francis. You ready, Rebecca? Call the salary board meeting to order at nine twenty-four AM. I have a motion. Oh, we have public comment on the salary board.
Can we look it over? Because we didn't have time. Can I have like two or three minutes, two minutes, maybe?
Skim through. I mean, it's most, yeah, well, it's mostly kind of what was in the meeting, except for the recycling technician.
Oh, yeah, if you can let the public know, what's the latest recycling schedule? I'm interested in that also, you know.
Well, that has nothing to do with the salary board.
Yeah.
Are there going to be workers there?
It has nothing to do with the salary board.
It doesn't?
Stacy?
I'm looking at the motion to approve the changes to the miscellaneous compensation schedule for prison inmate labor. There's a wide range of salary. Can you explain how that is decided, dispersed?
Well, it's always been a wide range. It was twenty-five cents to two dollars before, and now it's up to ten twenty-five, depending on where they'll be working for us and what they'll be doing. So if they become certified at the recycling center and certified on the forklifts and the skid steers and certified on the balers, then they'll be at the higher rate. If they're not, then they'll still be at the lower rates.
At a lower rate of a quarter of an hour?
I mean. No, we don't have.
There is a move.
We don't have anybody at a quarter of an hour. Our lowest rate was two dollars an hour for a prison inmate to work at the recycling.
I mean, there is a move for fair wages to be paid for two inmates on national levels.
Well, I understand that, and, but the lawsuit that you're referring to is entirely different than what our operation is.
I have a question about the number nine and ten. Assistant Public Defender is now, they're eliminating number ten, the full-time position of Assistant Public Defender, you're going now to part-time?
Yes.
And any reason for that? Why are you going part-time instead of full-time?
That's just what the recommendation of Linda LaBarber, our public defender, felt, that she didn't need a full-time individual, that she could work with a part-time individual. That was her recommendation.
So do you know if that's because there's less cases to deal with since we're under COVID? Are they dealing with cases at all? Is there court cases happening?
Yeah, there's still stuff going on all the time, but we don't get involved in Linda's office, you know, we just support her.
So we haven't had part-time before. It was before with Beardsley, it was full-time?
No, it was part-time before that.
It was part-time, then we went full-time, and now we're going back to part-time.
And how was the salary for part-time? Has that increased since the last part-time resignation?
Minimal.
Minimal. About the same.
About the same. And then Linda Barbera is what, the full-time public defender?
Yes, she is.
And what's her salary?
I'd have to get back to you on that. We'd have to check. You don't know, Rebecca, do you?
No, you don't know.
Okay, we don't know.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, can I get a motion?
Motion to close public comment.
I'll second that motion.
A motion by Commissioner Hall to close public comment at nine twenty-seven, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve item five.
I'll second that.
Item three, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'll second that.
Item three or two?
Two, I'm sorry.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Let's do two first.
Let's do two first. You guys are in a hurry today, aren't you? Motion by Commissioner Hall to approve the minutes of the June tenth salary board meeting, seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve three.
I will second number three.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to eliminate one of the three temporary, full-time, union-eligible positions of recycling technician at ten twenty-five per hour, forty hours per week, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the residual bargaining contract in the county policy, effective July twenty-second, per the recommendation of Jennifer Hibbert, Recycling Coordinator. Seconded by Commissioner Herschel. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve item four.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall to create a full-time, union-eligible position of recycling technician, ten twenty-five per hour, forty hours per week, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to residual bargaining contract in the county policy, effective July twenty-second, per the recommendation of Jennifer Hibbert, Recycling Coordinator. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Motion to approve five.
I'll second that.
I have a motion by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, to eliminate the full-time, union-eligible position of Temporary Recycling Center Secretary, eleven forty-eight per hour, no benefits, effective July twenty-second, per the recommendation of Jennifer Hibbert, Recycling Coordinator. All in favor, say aye.
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 Motion to approve six.
I'll second number six.
Motion by Commissioner Hall, seconded by Commissioner Herschel, to create a full-time, non-union position of Assistant Recycling Coordinator at fourteen thirty-eight per hour, forty hours per week, with a six-month probationary period and benefits according to the bargaining unit, effective July twenty-second, per the recommendation of Jennifer Hibbert, Recycling Coordinator. All in favor, say aye.
Aye. Why is that, why is it saying non-union?
I'm sorry. The Assistant Recycling Coordinator?
Yeah.
Because it's a supervisory position. Okay, cool. Number seven?
Motion to approve seven.
I will second that.
Motion by Commissioner Hall to create a second, full-time, non-union position of Processing Shipping Manager at twelve eighty-four per hour, forty hours per week, with six months.